Everyone, and welcome to the Glen County Board of Education Work Session for December the ninth. It is 5:01 PM, and I will turn it over to Dr. Schef for that information.
All right, we'll start off with Dr. Whitehead with the COVID update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we are currently still, you know, doing well even within our green level of operations. I had a chance to talk with Ms. Ork this afternoon to see if anything's changed in the reporting that she's seeing. She confirmed that she's still seeing the reported cases as family transmissions. We're not seeing a connection to any exposures at school at this point in time, so wanted to be able to confirm that for you. We do, though, want to reiterate, request again, that if parents have taken their children to be tested for COVID because of symptoms, that they keep them out of school until they get those results back and send them. We have had one case that ended up with multiple exposures at school that, you know, they can still attend under green, but we just don't want that where we can avoid it. So, if parents would please help us with that, that would go a long way. And there were no positive cases reported today for our school system, so that was definitely a good piece. Just giving you the other contextual information we've been looking at as far as the transmission index for Glen County and seeing what that looks like. That was posted through yesterday, and you'll see that it's just kind of up and down since right before Thanksgiving. And then the next slide showing you the information for the seven-day rolling average, and our seven-day rolling average for today is eight point four for total cases, and this same time last year was nineteen point one. So, just gives you a little bit of historical reference there, and then you see again where our highest points have been. The next, again, is just another look at what the trend data has looked like over time, and you can see we luckily kind of have that more of a flat line that we're seeing over the most recent times on the graph, and then that is pulled out of that smaller image that you see that shows that trend data over time, and again, seeing that delta spike that had that sharp rise and then fell off about as quickly. So, we were definitely glad that was the case. We continue to look every week, getting the report of cases by age, so we do have a chance to see, you know, all age ranges, but then as we move to the next slide, this is the slide that we focus on when we're trying to determine the accuracy of our parent and family-reported data, and so this is our school-aged children snapshot, and this past week, there were ten in the whole community. So, again, this isn't specific to Glen County schools, this is in the entire community, and we compare that then to what we are seeing reported in our schools. The positivity rate did have a little bit of an increase last week, and that's, again, those that are testing and the percentage testing positive. And then the remaining slides, again, just give you what the past week looked like with cases in Glen County by age group, just split out from that other graph that is busier than this one. And then our last week's data, what we were looking at with less than the one percent having an impact in the schools. I don't know if you have any questions about the data or what we're seeing. Still, fortunately, operating in green, and we're able to have Thanksgiving lunches at school, and families seem to be very responsive and happy to be in the buildings during those events, too.
So, District Wyler letting people, parents are able to come back in now for the most part?
Yes.
Moving down to three F, Dr. Whitehead is an item there.
Yes, sir. Three F is a review of the agreement with Hanover Research. This is the group that I've referenced, and I think Dr. Green and Mrs. Miller have referenced as well, that would allow us a partnership with a third party to take a look and help us with researching our curriculum, the choices we have in place, and if those are the most effective curriculum resources we can be using, especially given the learning loss that we're dealing with, they would do research with them, but then they would also consult with experts in the field and give us feedback on that, and we would be able to use that for decision-making about, again, the curriculum that we have in place, what decisions we might want to look at with that, and other program evaluation pieces. Moving beyond that, they would help us look at redundancy that we may have in some places, overlap of services, those kinds of things. With this partnership, we would be what they would call an advisory partner, and that would allow us to have a project running, like back-to-back. We can start a project, as soon as it's completed, start the next project. We'll be assigned a research team with Hanover, they would work with us on that. And then, some other added benefits to that, one in particular is that our staff would then have access to their research database, so if we have staff that are, you know, working on the federal programs, anything federal programs has to have an evidence base when we're spending money, we would be able to access that, but then also, any of our staff that are in advanced learning programs to get higher degrees, they would have access to that research database, which would be something unique for them that unless their system was a partner with Hanover, they wouldn't have access to. So, I don't know if you have any questions about that or have concerns, we'd like to review this as a three-year contract, but with the option at the end of each year to reconsider whether we would continue the partnership, and it would be an annual fee of eighty-seven thousand five hundred, and because it is helping us look, look at the effectiveness of things that we have in place, particularly around learning loss, we would be able to use CARES funding. It was included in our last.
Have we ever used something like this before?
I'm sorry?
Have we used something like this before?
Not to have a third party take a look. We've had consultants from the vendors come and share research with us, you know, which we all know sometimes how that goes, you all have had very good questions for some of them yourselves. This is somebody who's external to a vendor, external to us, and they would be taking a close look at things and then giving us a report out of what their findings are.
No, they're not not-for-profit. Right, I mean, you know.
Right, I mean, they.
Just at first glance, I mean, we've talked about this before, we've got, you know, kind of heavy middle-management experts, you know, in our system, and, you know, it seems like we have people that can evaluate our programs. We pay, you know, we've got instructional coaches, we've got a lot of middle-management, we talk about that all the time, and so, I mean, whether it's CARES Act funding or not, I don't know that it's, you know, something that we should be doing, and I don't know what kind of recommendations they're going to make, I don't know their background, need to look at them a little bit more, too, and find out, you know, how are they going to be steering us when they, when they make these suggestions. I know we don't have to take those necessarily, but just at first glance, I don't know, it seems like we're just, again, this may be something that's going to be an extra burden, because you're going to have to, you could do some extra work, too, to make this work, right? So, seems like a big investment to have somebody tell us what we should probably already be knowing ourselves, but that's just not the case.
It also, it also gives a non-biased opinion because they're not affiliated with, because I'm going to sell my company, but if this is external, someone coming in, they should give us a non-biased opinion, and we can listen to the vendor's perspective and their perspective, and draw from the best contribution.
But like, nothing's unbiased, you know what I mean? So, I mean, there's something, yeah.
Because somebody knows somebody that knows somebody.
Years ago, when we went into the recession and we started cutting resources and educational programs that we were using, Mr. Rents, and I'm not sure who the other Assistant Superintendent was, they took a long look at those things, and we cut down because we really had to get slim, and I've been telling you since I became Superintendent that I think we're going to hit the bottom in a couple of years. I want to be able, in a couple of years, using this to say, okay, this is, we know this works, not just because I say it, not just because our Assistant Superintendents say it, because they say it. That's when the CARES Act runs out, is in three years, and that's when I think we're going to hit the bottom, is sometime between now and then.
But y'all can't look at our numbers and tell us what's happening and what's not happening?
Certainly, certainly.
If it's effective or not?
Yeah, I mean, certainly.
We need to pay eighty-seven thousand dollars to tell us not to.
I have no problem looking at it.
If Reed One Eighty's effective, or, you know, I don't know, I just, I feel like we're.
I think my biggest thing is you're educators, and you have doctorate degrees, and I know how far for the master's degree it is, because it's a ton of research.
Right.
And if we have all these doctorate-level people who are research-based, I just don't want to pay somebody else to do research when that's why we pay teachers more and other educators more money as their degree goes up, and when you hit doctorate degree, you have done all the research and all the writings and know how to do it. It'd take a minute for you to write that, you know what I'm saying? So, it just kind of hits me funny that you're looking for someone to do research, but.
I'm looking for someone that's going to give us another opinion, other than just ours, because people are going to be loyal to the programs that they purchase or the programs that they back. So, everyone's going to have a biased opinion about the things that they like, and so that's all we're trying to do, is get an unbiased opinion, since we do have the money to do that, so that we make sure in three years that we're in a situation that we can be thin and trim, and we can still operate effectively. But can we do that? Yes, but this takes a lot of the bias out.
Is any of our, anybody else in our research using them right now that you know?
Wayne County is. I've talked with Amy Denny about the work they've done, and she's shared several of their reports with me before we, you know, went very much further. That was one of the first questions we asked, was anybody that we would know that they've worked with.
You said Wayne County?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious why this isn't a one-time review. I would think if they did a review of the curriculum, that would kind of be the end of the project, but it looks like they're just going to continue to review the same stuff, or?
It would be different projects, so we would prioritize the things that we wanted to examine, so they would help us with program review, and right now, the priority that we see is to look and see are the units of study and the Eureka Math curriculum, like those are kind of the top two projects we would like for them to do. They take about five to six weeks on average per project, and then, so you have to wait for one to finish, pick up the next one, but then we've also talked about doing some departmental program reviews and job studies and things like that, and they would be able to help us with that as well.
So, it's a flat rate based on however much they can get done that we tell them we want to?
The level. And again, it's, I mean, there's the ability to see what happens in that first year and then say, you know, this isn't what we thought we were going to get, and make a different decision.
So, we don't have to renew it in 2022? That's not a three-year contract?
We have three-year pricing, but there is an opt-out, Mr. Lightfoot has renewed.
Yeah, I, I tweaked this.
Yes.
First of all, we, they wanted jurisdiction in God knows where, and they wanted a three-year deal, and I said, we had to have an opt-out after every year, and we had to put in a funds available. So, I tweaked my end, I don't make decisions on content, that's up to y'all, but on my end, I tweaked it so we can get out after a year, and I also put in, we had to have funds available.
That's correct.
So, still up to y'all, but we made changes that satisfied me.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Whitehead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our proposed Board of Education meeting dates for 2022.
And so, we start with, the board meeting is always the second Tuesday, and the work session is the Thursday prior, and so I think the only time that is not there is, you look in June, you'll see it there, and that's because I believe the next week, we go to GSBA in Savannah. Is that correct, Ms. Green?
It is correct.
And the other one is in November, no, that's not November, no, it's late, it's in April because of spring break. Spring break is the week before. Other than that, it's the second Tuesday is the board meeting, and the Thursday prior is the work session, so. Any questions about that? I know that in the past, you guys have had one meeting in December. I don't have a problem doing that, but.
I don't.
I kind of, I kind of like this. Was it July?
I know July tends to be short because we're going into summertime. I wouldn't be opposed to doing one meeting in July, because I know a lot of people are taking vacations, so if you can kind of get one.
Yeah, and then late July, I will say that in late July, we always seem to have an extra board meeting to get people hired, too.
Yeah.
So, we could take off the July the seventh, and then know that we're probably going to have a meeting, you know, right before.
That we're doing a bunch of hiring, but I didn't think about that, so we need to have the two, the hiring re.
Yeah. That's when we're, I mean, that's when we're getting our late hires in. So, you know, it seems like every, we always have an extra board meeting in July, the last part of July to hire teachers.
Any questions there, any concerns? Okay. All right.
Typically, you have your elections at the first meeting in Hanover, at the work session.
Next is going to be Dr. Green with the Computer Science Grant Award.
Good afternoon, excuse me, good evening, everybody.
This afternoon, Steve.
Yeah. So, we have an opportunity to apply for the Computer Science Capacity Grant, which is posted, our award that is posted, it's twenty-five thousand dollars we were awarded for our.
To essentially build our teacher capacity as it relates to computer science. Senate Bill 108 is the Senate bill that says that all schools need to be offering some opportunity for computer science, starting next year, middle schools and high schools should have some type of course that is centered around computer science, so this essentially is about building the capacity of the teachers to do that. Currently, there are two opportunities in Georgia for teachers to take, to get certification or endorsement, and so, most resurs offer computer science endorsement at like six hundred to seven hundred dollars per course, and from what I've seen, most of them offer three to four courses to get the endorsement, and there's certain requirements per Georgia that they have to meet in order to do that, and then there's also a GACE for computer science that we could potentially pay teachers who, who are interested in actually doing these particular courses. Another avenue, not related to computer science, but related, is those teachers who potentially have an engineering degree, but are currently teaching maybe math or science. Engineering degrees will also, are a pathway into getting computer science certification. So, this essentially is just providing the opportunities or providing the funding source for teachers to be able to get those certifications, so that we have highly qualified staff teaching the computer science courses.
So, where do we need to expand, in the middle school?
Right now, middle school, right now, definitely middle school. The courses that we're currently offering, even our high school courses that we're offering in middle school, don't meet the criteria. We thought they would, and I actually spoke with the state specialist, but he said no. So, there are a couple of courses that we're looking to incorporate next year, that we need to get somebody in an endorsement course to be able to teach, and they are pretty, pretty in-depth, the computational thinking, software hardware, network systems, coding, programming, and programming in current languages like C sharp, Java, you know, so it's definitely a lot more extravagant than I thought it was going to be when I first read the bill, but definitely we're prepared, and all the middle school principals are talking and trying to identify. Needwood Middle School is the only school currently right now that has a teacher in a computer science endorsement, and we paid for it through our Title II grant.
Any other questions for Dr. Green? Thank you, Dr. Green.
Awesome, thank you.
Let's see, Mr. Blackerby.
Are we all doing? Glen Academy PE Edition, we are, right now, all the slabs have been poured, masonry walls are going up around the outside of the gym, trying to coordinate that. The roof insulation should have been started today, I don't know if the rain yesterday got things too wet to work up there, but, so we'll be doing the roof insulation and the soffit framing is going on, or started last week and is ongoing. From a schedule standpoint, we're roughly about kind of two weeks behind on the actual gym itself, but two weeks ahead on the classroom side of things, because we shifted some things around to, based on the availability of supplies, and also trying to use the most efficient use of what we did have, so, you know, things are going well there. Should, over the next month or so, you know, we should see all the walls up, and we'll have a closed-end building. Only things of concern that I probably have there right now is, I don't believe we have a scheduled delivery time yet of the actual gym floor and the flooring materials, those have been delayed, not just here, but throughout the country, and we don't have a delivery date on the duct stock, which is over the gym floor, but pretty much everything else is available in either already scheduled for delivery or is here, so we're, things are going well there. As far as the East Plus Four projects, which, if you will, Ms. Green, let's drop down the Goode Report and open up the, the, yeah, I just created this based off some of the Goode Report numbers and also some things that had not yet been updated in the Goode Report, so we could kind of see where we stood on project budgets and, as well as I can talk through some of the scheduling, where we are now. With Needwood, we are, I'd say we're about seventy-five percent done with the first wing, with painting is underway. The major holdup right now is we are waiting on the condensers for the air-conditioning units, all the air handlers are up and installed, duct work is essentially completed, most of the electrical work is done, so that's our, kind of our holdup right now, the, we don't want to install the flooring until we make sure we have the space condition, so we make sure that we don't have any issues with the glue, but we are looking at, you know, probably late January, being done with that first wing and doing the changeover, and the next two wings will be done in roughly half the time of what these, because we already have everything on site now, we already have all the, as soon as the condensers arrive, we'll have those, we already have the air handlers, we already have all the light fixtures and all the ductwork material and the flooring material that we need, so we'll move rather quickly on the next couple of rounds of that. As far as Golden Isles goes, we're kind of rotating through the building in a clockwise fashion, and the 500 wing, the acoustical ceilings are going up now, painting is about ninety percent complete in that area of the building. Air-conditioning units for the entire building are scheduled to arrive, I believe, on the thirteenth next week, and we'll start installing those immediately, and the flooring will start going down within about two weeks, and we're on track, right now, we're on track to be, with the exception of the kitchen, the gym, and the media center, we should be complete with all the classrooms in late February, early March, and we'll be able to go ahead and start setting up furniture and that, and the things in the classrooms. The gym, right now, we're using it for storage, so we don't have an option of working in there. And Oglethorpe Point, on the sixteenth, Thursday the sixteenth, that afternoon, we're going to start the swapover from the current set of classrooms to the next set of classrooms, we're going to do it in the evening after school, and then continue on Friday morning doing the swapover, because we want to begin demolition on the next set of classrooms immediately, the next Saturday morning, starting Christmas or Christmas Vacation, and with anticipation of that next set of classrooms, because again, we already have everything on site, January twentieth, we should be done with the next set, and we'll move to the next hallway, and same thing there, we have a rough target date of before spring break, we should be done with all the classrooms, and we'll still have to come back and do some work in the hallways, but then we'll be ready to start the media center and admin areas and other things. So, now that we have all the kinks worked out of the plans, because when you take these older buildings apart, you always find things that you didn't anticipate, but we think we've got all that worked out, and again, we have most of the supplies on hand now. Storage has been an issue, we have Conex trailers stuck everywhere, we can find one, but we have, we have most everything on site. From a budget standpoint, you can see what's been allocated for each of those projects on there, and then in the far right, what is left when you take into account any value engineering or contingencies left over, so within the renovation project budgets overall, you know, provided any other unforeseen circumstances, right now, we have about five-and-a-half million dollars remaining in there, which, in a moment, you'll see, we have a GMP for the kitchen work at Golden Isles, but as far as St. Simon's Elementary goes, we have the, the First Force Lab is poured, the stairwells are about seventy-five percent finished with the blockwork there, and we. And we should be getting steel deliveries in over the holidays and with anticipation of starting the steel work first week of January. Right now, no significant supply chain issues there. Now that we've, now that we've got everything ordered and on the way, we're... Should not have any big glitches there. Down at the bottom, kind of a summary, you see there's, from what was allocated versus what we have under contract in the renovations, there's about 5.1 million remaining in the budgets. And the additional 400,000 is what we still have due to value engineering and contingency, which we're still every day trying to find ways to, you know, we know that we have unanticipated expenditures, but we're also finding ways to either take things out of the scope of work or change the way we're doing things. And most recent was, we noticed we, some of the door hardware that we were anticipating changing at Oglethorpe, we went through and did inventory of it, and we've probably saved 75,000 there, just in some door hardware that was in the scope that, just do, doing another inventory, we decided not to do, so... But, there are the major items remaining, which are the kitchens, we still have the scope of work there, and then furniture for the projects as well, which we are in the process of gathering furniture needs, particularly for Golden Isles right now. Working with the principal there to find out what is needed and trying to start getting quotes and bids on that. As far as the, as St. Simon's goes, there's roughly 12 million in the allocated funds remaining, which still needs to go towards the modernization of the existing building plus the gym construction.
What happened with, you may have mentioned this before, and I apologize that I didn't remember, but the Golden Isles contingency, why is it so low right now? Is it because it's a similar-sized project, but are we just farther ahead as we've used before? Or did something happen, I can't remember?
Two things, we are, we are farther along, but we are not going to, at Needwood and Oglethorpe, we're not gonna come close to the problems we had at Golden Isles. Golden Isles, we've just, there's been a lot of electrical disconnects on the HVAC units, for one. They weren't included in the scope of work when we went to, you know, did an electrical survey on the, for the electrical requirements of the units, the disconnects, they were all rusted, they all needed to be changed. And that was, that was one, one issue, major issue there. We found some collapsed sewer lines that we had to do some extensive saw cutting on the concrete slab to replace that, things that were just not anticipated, but as we, so, we did go through that contingency fairly, fairly quickly. It was a totally different animal than Oglethorpe or Needwood.
Considering all those supply chain issues, furniture might need to be ordered yesterday.
You're exactly right.
It might not come in after three years.
We still don't have some for Altama, that's exactly right. Yeah, we're working very closely with them, and they're... Some companies are not even really giving you pricing on large orders right now, just due to the fact they know that, they either can't get it or they know they can't guarantee the price. Just kinda the nature of what we're dealing with right now. And, and a lot of things that you get pricing on, if the pricing's good for 12 days. And so, if you don't do a quick turnaround, but so, we want to make sure we have it completely where we want it when we do decide to make a recommendation.
I'm sure you can call us into a meeting if you needed us to come in and approve the 12-day furniture thing because it's a significant issue in all of America, so if we need to get in here, we can get in there.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Speaking for myself, I'm getting quite a little bit of you, but...
I've met with four different furniture reps over the last few weeks and trying to determine what the best schedule is for that. Most of them are telling me right now, for the type of stuff we would be needing, kinda February would be the date that we need to be eyeing to make a decision, for typical classroom furniture, that is.
And we're not opening a brand-new school, so we still have the furniture that's in the school.
That's right, we have, yeah. Golden Isles furniture is probably in the worst condition out of all three of them. It's, I don't know if it's because it's the oldest or what, but no, we did not, we did not throw anything away. So, if you go in the gym, you'll see it, it's there. And we're not, we're not getting rid of anything till we, till we know we have something to replace it with. Mr. Britt, if you want to go back to the actual... If you will, you can scroll down to the, I think it's page five. This shows our receipts, which you may have already seen before the month of November. We were at, right at two and a half million. I believe the next slide has a comparison. So, two and a half million, and last year this time, it was 2.1 million, so kinda consistent with what we've been seeing over time as far as collections go.
Any questions for Mr. Blackerby? Yeah, he's also got several things to talk about down below, so we'll go to 3B.
This is just a simple easement, we are changing where Georgia Power provides service to the new, or to the building, which will also become the service for the entire site eventually. So, Georgia Power essentially needs an easement on our land to set the new transformer. I believe if you read through the documentation, it's pretty standard, I believe Mr. Lakin reviewed it, it's pretty standard easement. I think in the end, they owe us $10, if I'm not mistaken, something along those lines.
If there's such thing as standard...
Yeah, yeah, it provide, it just provides them permission from us to use our land to set the transformer and to provide the service lines to St. Simon's Elementary. It is in our best interest, if we would like...
It's a lot easier to work with than that.
We won't discuss that right now.
Bring that up. It's a lot easier to work with than my orders, so I guess everyone likes TV.
Any questions about the easement? Next, we got guaranteed maximum price for Golden Isles Kitchen.
Well, there's another easement.
Another easement, too, yeah, because we kept getting those mixed up.
This easement is... This easement is actually not a, not for a utility company, it's from a developer that I am, have not been given the name of the developer. Robert's Engineering is the one who has asked, or who has sent me the request. And it's, the plaque you're looking at there is, is, the school is Greer Elementary. And the development is scheduled to be directly adjacent to Greer. And they are asking for an easement to the manhole, which is noted on there on the map, which is right behind the kitchen at Greer. And they would like to bring a sanitary sewer line from the lift station that will be on their side of the property from that manhole behind the cafeteria. They have, and this is Robert's Engineering telling me this, because the question I've asked is, who's, who is, any damages, who's going to replace, repair them? And now, of course, I don't believe, they're not asking us in this, I don't believe to sign anything yet. I believe this is just a, an approval to proceed with their planning, because I don't believe they've provided us with any document. No, they haven't given me one either.
I understand the developers asked about it.
Yeah, that's, that's just from the research I did, that's what I get out of it. But, they haven't given us anything to sign yet, but the questions, preliminary questions I asked were, you know, if anybody damaged anything, are y'all gonna take care of it, which the answer, of course, that they provided me was yes. They don't plan on cutting the asphalt, they plan on jetting under the driveway, so there will be no... Because that was a concern I did have, was I didn't want them cutting across the driveway and us have a patch there, which usually doesn't work out well. There are some irrigation lines on that field that, you know, that they could potentially damage and would need to be repaired. Other than that, it's grass that they would be coming across. If you can picture that big field, it's just as you come in the...
Is it between the oak trees in the field? Is it down that, kinda down that there?
Yeah, that line of oak trees on that, on that field, that's, that's the proposed kinda location there. My assumption is that we'd have to have some guarantee that they stayed far off of those oak trees, they didn't damage them.
Is there some kind of field there now?
Yeah, it's just a multipurpose soccer field, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a maintained field, I mean, I don't, there.
If they don't have, I'm assuming this is just the best access for the rest of days, there's not one more?
Who turned them down, who turned them down before, do you know, and why?
I was not given the information. They were, there is a private landowner that was the original, I guess, maybe, I'm using these words just the way I interpreted it, but that was the preferred location, and we're the secondary location. But whoever owns the, or whoever owns the property that the manhole sits on, on the preferred location, said no. Why, I don't know. That's all I know about it.
Any questions?
So, they're gonna get back with you, Mike, as far as the damage?
I think they wanted, before they did that, they wanted to know if we were open, I mean, open to proceeding with it.
Subject to receiving, you?
Yes. Yes, yeah. That's correct.
We're just bringing this to you guys, if you're open.
If we'd even considered, I guess...
What they wanted to know is would we, before they did the legwork on actually doing hard surveys on it and getting the actual plan, was this something we would be open to? And if not, they would go to the next location, which I don't know where that would be, and ask them, my assumption is. But, they didn't, they didn't want to go through the expense of the legwork of doing all the surveys and drawing up the easement until they, until they knew if it was something we might consider, is...
And is that gonna be a cost to us?
Ma'am?
Would there be a cost to the board?
No, there should not be, kind of my, I mean, my recommendation is if there is a cost, then the answer is a definite no. If there's a cost or any damages that we're not taking care of. I'm not sure in the past if y'all done any of these before or not, or if we actually charged anybody for the easement, I don't know, then that's...
My biggest thing would be, long as it didn't disturb the kids during their, if it trench through there and take six months or how long to do it or something like that, that would be my only objection, I guess, for me.
I would think we could control the timeline, because they have to have our permission to come on the property.
Well, with the density of this, much like it's gonna be a smaller home, so it's gonna be, a neighborhood's gonna service, or our schools are gonna service our kids at this locations, that's why I don't really see it. It's pretty dense.
The number of kids going, there's another issue to discuss at a different, another time. Be another set of challenges.
Yes, it is. Next, we have the Golden Isles Kitchen Renovations GMP.
As I had mentioned a while ago in the budget, the kitchen phase of this was not included in the original GMP because the planning had not been done yet. As it stands right now, it's $984,000. The largest, or almost 50% of that is within the kitchen equipment itself, which is 422,000 of it. From what I know about the kitchen equipment, the food nutrition staff has done most of the legwork for the kitchen equipment part of it, but it is pretty much all original equipment in this building, and it's been patched back together. So, it is a full equipment replacement, combi ovens, walk-in freezer, tilt skillet, disposal of everything, as well as a new serving line. The serving line, which is a large portion of it as well, is, if you've been in there, the current serving line is kind of a horseshoe and it sticks out well out into the, into the cafeteria, which is also the auditorium for the school. So, with the current serving line there, there really is no seating for any type of a program or anything, so... That, this will take that away. Some of the early, I don't know if y'all were part of or not, back in, actually before I officially started, I had seen some of the early plans that were being batted around and some of that was actually expanding the kitchen beyond where it is now so that it would be more room. We've done away with that, that idea, because there was too many complicating factors with the grease trap and, and other things that that was not a feasible option. The other, one of the other major portions of this is we would, there are some, another area where there are some collapsing sewer lines, the floor drains, and so, it's a pretty big expense to remove those drains and replace the floor.
That's included in this?
That's included in this. Something that's included in this also that's not actually kitchen work is, there's plans to add, if you come in the back driveway there, to add some additional parking spaces for the staff and the teachers in the back of the building, to allow them more secure access into the back, as well as, from a health violation standpoint, just since I've been here, I know we were flagged twice for the dumpster placement, and they need a concrete pad for the dumpster that is non-existent at this point. I think all the, I think all the earthwork and, or site work and paving, all combined, I don't remember, that was maybe around 40,000. Earthwork is 12,000, asphalt and paving 31,000, and then concrete, another eight, so it's about $50,000 of this is, is concrete and asphalt work.
How does this fit into the original estimate for the overall renovation project there?
Well, it fits into the allocated budget amount. I don't, I don't know what the anticipated cost was going into it, but it, this... This brings the, the current to just over five of the six and a half.
Which is enough to complete the project within the budget, or we don't?
Oh, yeah, as it stands right now, there are... The other, only other additional adds are, which would still be within the budget, would be the gym floor, which I don't know, I mean, 80,000 is what I'd anticipate. And there's three air conditioner units that aren't included that were part of the kitchen. The engineering for that got a little tricky. The 125,000 contingency may, may suit that, but so... But, for the six and a half allocated, you know, we, we currently would have, after this is said, we'd have 800,000 or so left.
Any other questions for Mr. Blackerby? Thank you, sir. And now, Coach Waters? You do got a server.
Oh, man. Oh, well, this is one we're making money. This chiller, if you've been to a football game, is one of the two that's sitting over behind the end zone. One of them is gonna be scrapped, it's of no use. This is actually one that is, could still be operational, and I think we could probably get some, get a seller or buyer for it off of Gov. Deals. It's the chiller that was on top of, that was servicing the Glen Academy Gym, but was replaced with the new units when the addition started. This was one that was pulled off, and it probably still has some useful life to it. It's just the size that it is, we have no facility here that it could be, be used on, so... Feel like there may be a...
Can I hold that one up?
I don't, it... I don't, it, I don't.
Did it just air condition the white room underneath it?
No, it, it, it did the entire gym.
We put that up in ninety-seven.
No, I believe this is a replacement for that.
Okay, that would be a replacement, okay.
And if I was good enough at reading carrier, uh, serial numbers, um, I could probably tell you, but I don't believe this unit is even ten years old.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think back, but I wonder if I've seen it come through.
You, you may very well have.
Yeah.
I don't know. It, it's just from, again, I could probably punch in those numbers and find out exactly, but I, I, that was why I was, I knew it probably still has some useful life, and according to Dwayne Bratum, um, he recalls it being placed up there, but he didn't know the exact date. But, uh, I don't, it can't be more than, it may only be six or seven years old.
I don't remember being principal when that happened. I, I left Glen Academy in two thousand seventeen. I don't remember being principal when they did that.
No, but it was after that.
But we can't use it at any of our locations.
No, it's not, it is nowhere that it's suitable, um, suitable for.
Now, Mr. Waters. If not, we'll put it up there and we'll look at it.
So I'm not sure where Mr. Waters is. He told me he would be here.
Make that bigger, please. They're changing, he's changing the folks that do the uniforms, and so he's bid it out, and you can see the bids and the rank. Or the, you can see how he ranked them. But he's changed, he's changing the folks that he does the athletic uniforms with. We used to use BNS, BSN Sports.
So it's a five-year contract?
Yes.
Is that typical for us for this?
Three to five years is typical for athletics.
Okay, so under the recommendation, am I understanding, we're gonna be purchasing this equipment at whatever the cost is, and they're just giving us four hundred and fifty in credit and promotional?
Yes. Yeah, they're giving us those, they're giving us credits for promotional items, and we're agreeing to use them as our sole vendor. Which is pretty, that's pretty common, too.
Balls, bats, training equipment, that's for everything. That's kind of-
If they have it, if they have it, we're using them, yeah.
It says balls, bats, any kind of your equipment, and I guess jerseys, so anything doing athletics, they'll become the go-to. Unless they don't have it, then obviously.
This is included, it says uniforms, this includes all sports, middle school and high school?
Anything, the athletic part for the Glen County Schools that he purchases, yeah.
How does this differ from a couple of years ago, where we went from, we went up for bids, we had Under Armour, Nike, and had Adidas? Do we, we still use Nike, but through them, or how does that work?
I don't think we're using Nike. I, I think we're going with something else. I wanna say we're going with Under Armour, but I'm not sure. I wish Steve was here, because I didn't, I sent him.
I believe we are, and that's why, I think he had mentioned going back.
We're not, we're going away from Nike.
But I guess what Mike's saying is, through this, or I guess we'll be buying the Under Armour and everything through these people.
Yeah.
So being, like before, that we're Nike, the Nike, we-
We had to, yeah, we bought something, we had to buy Nike.
And that was through?
No, right now, we're Nike, but if we do this, I'm pretty sure it's Under Armour. I'll, I'll have Steve here Tuesday night if I have to go get him, and, and you guys can ask those questions. My head's about to blow off the top of it right now.
It's hard to leave that nice office come downtown.
What'd you say?
It's hard to leave that nice office come downtown.
We can remember meeting this today.
Make it easy for him.
I'd like to see the numbers.
Yeah, I might have some more questions about that.
Okay, that's no problem. He'll be here.
I might have to come back just to see what the, the reason is.
Well, and it does say approximately four hundred and fifty thousand, so it must be based somewhat on the amount that we purchase.
Right. Yeah, they rolled, yeah. It's, you're gonna get a percentage of what you're purchasing credits, yeah. And so he's probably using that based off of what he's, you know, over a five-year period, what he uses, what he usually purchases.
Would this be an agreement that Andy would write down, too?
But it's pretty straightforward. We purchase from them, or we don't, and we-
Yeah. We just don't have any other attachments to see.
That's why Waters will be at our next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, yes, he will. Um, the last thing is an MOU with Coastal Soccer Outreach. So basically Coastal Soccer, Coastal Outreach Soccer wants to, um, they wanna use the Racks Field, which is you, the old Rizley Middle Track. In between that, we have a field that we actually used to practice football on, but now there's no school there. There's the, um, Glen Learning Center, and then Morning Star Kids are there. They do use that facility during the day, and we would be able to do so. According to the agreement, they would have first rights after school, which we have no after-school activities taking place on that field. On, you know, I think sometimes there are Little League teams that just go there without, they don't get our permission, they just go. Yeah. So this would, they would basically take it, fix it up, keep it up, and, and actually, we wouldn't have to cut it anymore. They would, they would maintain it, so.
How long is this agreement?
This is gonna be, we're gonna go down, I wanna say it's five years, and we, and we look at it every five years, so.
He wanted twenty.
Yeah.
And we, we could not live with that.
Right, so we'll just do five years at a time, and then re, redo it if that's something we want, because I mean, we don't know what we're gonna do with that build in five years from now.
What would be the reasons, I mean, is there, like, for some reason he would stop using over the, I guess it would dissolve, or if one party doesn't, then one, another doesn't terminate, does it cancel, Andy?
There's, there's an out, we're, we-
We both agree to it.
We have some-
I'm sure he's gonna keep it going for-
There, there, there's a way out. This, this is gratuitous, but they are gonna make improvements.
Right.
Yes.
So they, they deserve to have, you know, some degree of exclusivity, but not open in.
And, and, and in all reality, these two, these children that will be participating in this program are our students.
Yeah.
So he's, he, they're coming in, they're gonna fix the place up, use it for the benefit of our students.
We'll maintain it, right?
Yeah.
Now maintain it?
A lot of these kids can't afford to go to jail. That's what I was told.
Are we gonna help, uh, take care of it some? I mean, I, I, that's kind of where I was going with as far as the maintenance kind of, so I will, I guess we'll, we'll work with them, I guess, however.
Yeah, we'll work with them. I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna mark it, they're gonna fix it up, they're gonna put irrigation in, and they're gonna do a lot of things to make that place nicer. Any questions about that?
I was just gonna point out, in Section Ten, with regard to the renewals, it talks about within the twelve months prior to the expiration of a five-year term, both parties will discuss the extension. So, doesn't really indicate that we would have to have specific reasons for not agreeing.
You can remember that, it says they will maintain the field and its facilities, everything. They'll do everything, so. If we bring a truck on there and damage something, then we'll be responsible for it.
So we don't use that during school or out of school?
During school we do. During school-
Number four says the field will need to be closed for all users periodically to allow grass to recover.
Yeah.
So that needs to be worked out within the school, not-
Yeah.
And I know he would. It's not that he's not a reasonable person.
Right, and that's the same, I mean, that, that's the same with any field that we have. If we, if we're gonna, if we're gonna fix it up or do something, some repairs to it, we have to close it sometimes.
And that's, that's us playing ahead and managing our field.
Right.
That's not him.
Right.
That's what I mean, that he, that he does go through us, and we-
Yeah.
Have the cheerleading championship there on Thursday, he wants to close it on Wednesday, Friday to grow. Not that he would, but he's sort of sad.
Yeah. I mean, at this point, the only thing we use that field for is to walk around that track. If they, usually if they have P, they, they are in the gym.
Just something to look at.
Any other questions about this? That is all I have. Mr. Edg.
That brings us down to executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for land legal and personnel.
Should move.
Moved by Ms. Sam, second with Ms. Gibbons.
Tribune.
And tribunal review. So, Ms. Sam's, uh, second with Ms. Gibbons, all those in favor, is unanimous at five to seven, Ms. Brown. unanimous at five to seven, Ms. Brown.
...
Turned over the session.
So moved.
By Ms. Sam, second by Mr. Madella. All those in favor? It is unanimous at six fifty-eight.
Before we adjourn, I've got one quick thing to say.
Yes, sir.
On the camera, right? This is, I know people are gonna wonder why the mask. I said if we have over, if we have double digits at the hospital, I'll wear a mask. And we have ten. So hopefully Tuesday, hopefully. I can't stand it, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
We need to approve it.
Oh, uh...
The tribunal.
Is there a motion to approve the tribunal?
So moved.
Second.
All right, move by Mr. Madella, second by Ms. Gibbons. All those in favor? Unanimous. Now we'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Get that one in. Let's do, uh, get the other man. Hopefully I will get a second.
Thank you.
Take it, Mr. Madella. All those in favor? It is unanimous. At six fifty-nine, Mr. Cole.